Let's call this regular meeting of the Ketchikan City Council, please call the roll.
Coos?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Please join me in the public.
My pledge to allegiance is to flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. That brings us down to communications. We have a letter there from the Andrews Kay. I think that's about it. Brings us to Christopher Goines. Did I pronounce that right? Are you here? Oh, are you guys doing the presentation?
Yes.
We pass it over. How about Claire? Are you with him?
Yes, but it's actually about a different piece of the...
Come on up.
Hi, Council and Mayor. Thank you for having me. What we had to talk about a little bit different off of the script from later on today is some easement documents that you'll be receiving probably at a future council meeting. And I'm just going to briefly read about what that's going to be, just to give you a heads up for what that is.
Chris, could you identify yourself?
I am sorry. Christopher Goines with the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities. And I'm the engineering manager for the Ketchikan Front Mill-Stedman Project right out here. Yeah, so as part of the Ketchikan-Front Mill-Stedman Project, DOT will be acquiring permanent easements, interest on existing storm drainage facilities and new Americans with Disability Act facilities. They will also need temporary construction easements for the necessary workspaces to build the project. The city has seven properties that will be impacted by the project. There are ten easement areas. Five are easements on existing storm drain facilities. Those are in Thomas Harbor. Five are easements on new ADA facilities, again, those ramps for American disabilities. And those are on the fire station, the visitor center, and Thomas Harbor. And then there are six separate temporary construction easements. These will be provided, these will provide the necessary temporary workspaces to facilitate the road and sidewalk improvements, some grading work to maintain slopes, do the upgraded facilities. And like I said before, you guys have the offer packages and they're working their way through the attorney team guys. We just wanted to give you that heads up and let you know that we are requesting the city to donate those for the project. That's all I have regarding that.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right. Garrett? Paul?
Mayor Williams, council members. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Garrett Paul. And I really just want to introduce myself. I'm a construction project manager for the Alaska Department of Transportation. I currently have two projects in Ketchikan. One's Troller Street Bridge Replacement. The other is North Pongus Highway Illumination Project. I have another couple of projects coming up. Front Mill-Stedman, the one Chris just spoke of, and Waterfall Creek Bridges, which are further north. So I just really wanted to introduce myself and say thanks for having us.
What was the bridge one you said?
Troller Creek Bridge.
Which one's that?
St. Canute's Cove Road.
Oh, that one they're working on. Okay.
Yeah, we're aiming to be done mid-July, so.
It's always creeks when you're over it.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Tim? Is it Louis?
Yes, it is.
Come on up.
How are you doing tonight?
Real good.
So I'm Tim Lewis. I represent Cape Fox. We're here tonight regarding the proposed noise variance by the DOT. We are very concerned about it. If any of you have been up to Cape Fox recently or stayed in one of our rooms, you would know, being in Alaska, we don't have air conditioners. The time of year that they're proposing to do the overnight work is our busy season and we're very concerned with it. Due to the climate, we don't, you know, our windows are open all night with most of our guests. Last month, DOT did a project downtown throughout the night and it cost us about $1,000. We had to refund rooms due to the noise that the trucks make, the lights going off, and everything else. And May is the start of our busy season, so we'd be looking to lose about $15,000 in re-renting at night based off our numbers and what we are looking at. You know, that doesn't include our restaurant, our teer company, our tram. But we're here tonight to strongly urge the mayor and the city council to carefully consider the potential impact on us and our other local businesses that are going to be facing this impact. And just to let everybody know, we're fully prepared to protect our assets and our business and mitigate any risk associated with that. But it's definitely a big concern for us and Cape Fox as a whole, so we are not in favor of it. We think there's better opportunities to look at and our busy season in the middle of night in front of our hotels is not one of them. That's what we're here for tonight. And if there's any questions, we did draft a letter for the city council that I'd like to leave.
Thanks.
So go ahead.
One question.
Yeah, absolutely.
What better opportunities did you have in mind?
Well, A, the off-season and during the day would be the clear ones. You know, we understand that things have to be done, but May is certainly not the month to be interrupting, you know, our business up there. You know, if this was November or October or something like that, I don't think you'd be having the same conversation because we were equal to shut part of our hotel down for that. But come April, May, June, July, August, and September, that's not the case for us. And those are the months that we rely on to get us through the off-seasons. Right now, we're only relying on do improvements that we're doing at the lodge and things like that. So we've been faced with challenges and this challenge, I agree, we're not prepared to go through.
Thank you. Did you see it?
No.
Thank you very much, Tim.
One other thing last time I was up here was about the tram, so we didn't want to update you before we operational. It's going back to business as normal and we don't see any more shutdowns, so.
Thank you very much. All right, Rob?
Rob Shear. Honorable Mayor, City Council. Rob Shear, 614 Lotus, Ketchikan, Alaska. I'm here to speak briefly about the ongoing nuance of the Thomas Basin sheet pile replacement. And currently, the 401 or 408 request for the dredge limits variation that was approved at the last city council meeting, the Corps is asking for a new letter of concurrence that can move that project forward. And at the same time, we understand that there's nuance to be discussed with city staff outside of the 408. The 408 is one element that has already been decided except for the comment period has come to a close or will shortly come to a close and the Corps is just asking for another letter of concurrence. So to be expeditious for this project to be completed before there's a possible failure and the fact that the funding mechanism is in place with the private sector and we're at the table there, we just are looking for the city council to take action on that. At the same time, knowing there's nuance yet to be considered, that we're, we'll actually deal with some of the fine details, the final commitments on how the long-term dial or language will be with regard to placement. But the 408 is a critical path item. It either passes or it doesn't. It either stalls or it allows us to move forward. So we're asking for that letter as per the past several months of meetings between Ports and Harbors City and the Corps itself to be, to be, again, have concurrence and move forward. Any questions?
Any questions for Rob? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's the last person signed up. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jan Paulson, 777 Main Street, Ketchikan. And I'm here to comment on the change order being considered for pool engineering on berth one project. I was the second bidder on that job and I followed up on the agenda. One of the bid items is, one of the change order items was paying pool engineering an additional $100,000 to provide a mechanical administrator for the job. This question was addressed in pre-bid documents. The question was asked if mechanical administrator was required. The city responded in an addendum. The project does not specifically require a mechanical administrator. However, the contractor is responsible for adhering to local and state requirements. What we did after receiving that is we called the state mechanical inspector, part of our due diligence, and we were told that a mechanical administrator was required. And we included the price for a subcontractor in our bid. Pool should have done the same thing. The engineer, instead of saying that, should have called the state mechanical inspector and found out if that was required or not. I mean, his opinion is the only one that counts unless you're going to follow up with lawsuit challenge to state. This happened to me on a city Ketchikan job 20 years ago with city float. We bid it with our own workforce, started work, the state mechanical inspector shut us down, and we would have got a plumber to finish the work. Didn't, I wasn't smart enough to ask for more money, I guess. This is similar to other jobs in town. On Bar Harbor job that Pool was successful bidder on and completed two years ago, the spec said, "The contractor is responsible for knowledge of all permits as well as state, local state, federal codes, standards, or statutes related to the work he performs." It doesn't say you have to have a mechanical administrator. Pool was nearly shut down by the state mechanical inspector on that job and hired a plumber to finish the work. And as to my knowledge, didn't get compensation for doing, hiring a plumber outside of his contract. To me, he knew. I mean, the state's statute reads that within five feet of a building, the state, for 20 years, has considered anything off the street to require a mechanical administrator. Harbors are included, docks are included. The city, I didn't check into the city codes, but the city building officials have claimed in one of my customers that a dock is a structure as far as the local codes are concerned. So this is probably recorded by the local code as well. It's kind of hard to be competitive when a contractor can not follow the specifications and then halfway through the contract get paid to do it right. I guess that's my case. Does anybody else?
Yeah, that sounds thorough. Anybody have any questions?
Basically, the $100,000 change order would put within eight percent of my original bid on the contract for the water line, which had everything in it. I was going to subcontract out to a mechanical administrator. Any questions?
See you then at this time. Thanks, Jan, for bringing it up.
I mean...
Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. John Poole, Pool Engineering. I reside at 836 North Point Higgins. I'd like to just address Mr. Paulson's comments here real quick. You know, remember I went to the council, kind of spells it out, that Moffett Nickel, they had inquired about it and later on after the contract, confirmation that it was indeed required that a mechanical administrator be on site. So that's when we decided to acquire the services of a mechanical administrator. And again, the addendum did specifically state that one was not required for this project. In some communication with the State of Alaska on this, they do cite certain references. One of them is administrative code. Water service piping from street right away, water well or storage tank to the first stop valve of the service structure or other point of use or distribution on the service property requires plumber utility drill. In our case, the cruise ship dock out here, we were not providing any services to within five feet of a building and all the backflow preventers and valves are out at the base of the dock. And typically, you know, when you're running water distribution, mechanical administration takes over after that point, how I attribute it. And they do reference harbor distribution, but again, there's no, there's no reference to, you know, docks, standing docks. You know, harbor distribution is one thing. I think this is entirely a different thing. You know, another point I wanted to touch on was when Mr. Paulson makes reference to Bar Harbor floats one and nine. No, I did not, have not ever received a letter from any agency on that project that threatened to shut us down on that project. There was no specific requirement for mechanical administration in the specifications. There was a requirement for having someone certified to do the fire suppression system, and that's when we obtained the services to Ketchikan Mechanical on that project. And no, no change order was issued on that project. But I just, you know, and finally, I just want to say that, you know, this was not the only change order on the project. We had, you know, we had some work on the berth one South mooring dolphin due to some freeze damage. We had to hire Schmuck mechanical to replace some backflow preventers. Miscellaneous other items, we improved some of the hardware for the water distribution system and, you know, and in the end, we still came in underneath the second bidder. So, that being said, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for John? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the council tonight? See you then. We'll move on to the agenda. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to consent agenda. I was wondering if we could add 6A1 appointments, 6B1, the ordinance, and letting the manager run out, equipment space and conduit, 7A2, police department training, 7A5, property tax, and 7B1, the SCADA maintenance. Anybody have any problems with those? See you then. We'll go with those. Do we have a motion to consent?
Yeah, Honorable, I need to consent.
Move in second and bad of here can be the items, but... I think those were already under the consent. Well, that's...
Coos?
Yes.
Well, you gotta read them.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. A first of the minutes, regular city council meeting of May 18th, 2017. Appointments to the board, appointments to boards and commissions, Mayor Williams. Ordinance 17-1852, adding a new section to the Ketchikan Municipal Code entirely lease of equipment and conduit space, second reading. Budget transfer, police department training request. Resolution number 17266611, leaving a general property tax for municipal purposes upon all real and business personal property in the city for the year 2017, providing for the collection of taxes due in 2017, prescribing penalties and interest for delinquent taxes, exempting the procurement of SCADA maintenance agreement from competitive bidding, written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Open Systems International, Inc.
Any questions on any of the items? See you then. Call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to new business 71, public notice of section 408, permission request to modify the existing federal navigational limit for Thomas Basin where Alaska lumberjack show. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Honorable.
I move the city council direct staff to file comments in response to the public notice regarding the great Alaska lumberjack show, section 408, application to modify the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers dredging limits for Thomas Basin in support of the company's project to perform sheet pile repair at determine appropriate by the city council.
Sir.
Move in second. Bob?
Yeah, I think we move forward and approve that and give our consent. And then in regards to the stuff back from the harbor advisory board, I would assume defer that until Carl, Steve, and Rob have a chance to sit down and talk about the responsibility or shared responsibility for those structures.
Are you talking about the, just that section over by his wall?
Yeah.
And who gets this one? Anybody else? Dick?
Yeah, I probably echo Bob's comments and the discussion between staff and the great lumberjack, great Alaska lumberjack, so I think should come back before this council next meeting because we need, that project needs to move and it can't be dinged around with...
Dick, Bob?
Yeah, in my motion, I expect that we would send a letter off prior to that because I think that that's in regard to the 408 moving forward. And I think we should support that regarding...
Yes.
John?
Mark?
Ooh, we got one here.
Longer than I thought. Just some comments on behalf of the Ports and Harbors Advisory Board. There wasn't really much discussion about the 408 dredge plan. We know that's going to go ahead. Big time concerns about maintenance and adverse impacts and passing it along to the city afterwards. So that part of this topic, I would like to see on a future agenda items.
Okay. Carl?
Mr. Mayor, just to advise the council, there was a discussion that took place today between staff and the Corps of Engineers relative to the permit application that's pending. What the Corps would desire to see coming from the council, the council supports the project, they just want a simple statement of affirmation that we understand that dredge limits are changing as we've discussed in previous meetings and that that small portion that will now be outside of the dredge limits, if future dredging is required, that it won't be the Corps' responsibility. And that's been discussed in previous meetings. So they're just looking for an affirmation of those two points. So if the motion passes, that's what I'll put in the letter and transmit to the Corps.
Yep. Anybody else? Call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
See, that passes seven to nothing. That moves us on to 7383, request for noise variance, front mill and Stedman Street reconstruction project, Alaska Department of Transportation, public facilities. Did you want to do a presentation or something or say anything? Was something scheduled or...
I think he has.
I have not been informed, other than it brings us, it might be one.
Always the last...
You're now, you're now on the floor, so they can do that.
Go ahead.
Pursuant to section three, paragraph B, section 19.05.30, the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the city council director manager to issue the Alaska Department of Transportation Public Center a variance that will allow construction activity to take place from 10:00 PM for work associated ADAT and PF, front mill-Stedman Street reconstruction project, deemed appropriate by the city council.
Do we have a second?
Sir.
Move in second. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, this is Christopher Goines again, Alaska Department of Transportation. And I just want to talk to some of the concerns regarding why we're asking for the variance and show you the phasing plan that Garrett Paul and I and a couple of other construction staff have really worked really hard to get together and address some of the concerns that Cape Fox brings up and many of the other businesses that we've visited and seen approximately 45 people in the last two days, chamber lunch in, and open house to talk about this. So I'll start that.
Start it up. Can somebody hit the lights back there?
It's the popcorn.
Popcorn?
Picking it up. Mark, you? Nothing to know?
Is that our laptop?
No, I was working earlier.
Oh, okay.
So something's different? I don't know what.
So I won't, I'll try and make this as short and sweet as possible. As you guys know, we're building the project, front mill-Stedman, from the tunnel just before Deermont Street, so front mill-street around the corner and then down Stedman. So I'm the project engineering manager on the design side. And Garrett Paul is, once we're done with design, he's our construction project manager and we'll be turning over the project to him and you'll see a lot more of him and his staff as the project moves into construction. So... This is our eight-phase, 15-component phasing plan for the project. And to give you a, the synopsis of how this is going to work, and we took, me and Garrett and a couple others, took and broke the project down into piece by piece. Everything from, you know, forming days for concrete, how many days to prep for paving, storm drainage work, everything. We broke it down into individual days on every single piece of this project. And then we tried to come up with, okay, how do we break this up with the intent to do the least amount of disruption? Um, and then we tried to come up with, okay, how do we break this up with the intent to do the least amount of, uh, disruption during the construction? And, um, this is what we came up with. So you'd heard about this. I talked briefly about it in January when I was last here. But, uh, this is the refined version and what we've taken to others. So basically, um, if everything in right-of-way, uh, acquisition goes well, uh, we hope to start in October of this year. And we will start in October after the cruise ship seasons has left. And our goal will be during the winter season is to get all of the sidewalk done on the entire project. That means the wide, the curb widening, um, the new sidewalk, all your storm drainage, uh, deal with some of the pile issues that we have on, uh, Mill Street. And, uh, a lot of the heavy construction will happen during the winter. And so we will break this up. Um, we'll start here, right in front of City Hall. Doing with phase one, uh, with the, uh, the sidewalk out in front of City Hall. At the same time, we're gonna open up the left-hand side of Mill Street. And the sidewalk there and deal with the piles in, in Mill Street. Uh, once, uh, right out here in front of City Hall is completed, we'll move to fa- the next street over, uh, between Dock and Mission and work on that. And, um, and then at the same time, once that main street, or that Mill Street section is done on the right-hand side, we'll move to the left-hand side, uh, get all the sidewalk done and then progressively march through the project. So the next piece is the corner right there. Mill and Stedman, we'll get the sidewalk on the right next to the federal building. Once that's done, flip to the other side. And then we will begin getting the sidewalk on the other side of Stedman, um, in two different phases with a split right about there. And that is to make sure, um, that if anything happens in the construction, we're able to have one clear path out the road, um, to people who like to walk out to, um, uh, the totem poles and whatnot as we saw today. So, once that is done, then we'll jump back down to Ketchikan Creek, um, finish this section of sidewalk. And, um, then do this section of sidewalk after that is done. And the intent is to do this piece by piece by piece so that we don't affect parking downtown or at least as possible affect parking downtown. During the winter season and we don't have as much disruption to the individual businesses, um, in this way instead of opening up everything. So after that, and the reason we are here talking is the noise variance. So one of the issues that comes up is that gets us, doing all that sidewalk gets us to basically May first. And after that point, uh, we have work that requires warmer temperatures. It takes warmer temperatures to make sure you can make asphalt. It takes warmer temperatures to do the work on the Ketchikan Creek Bridge where we're gonna be putting polyester concrete. That is, that is temperature-dependent work, um, that we can't do during the winter. So it's imperative, uh, that we do that during the summer and the warmer temperatures. So we, the next thing we thought about was, well, the, how do we get the least amount of disruption to all the businesses that are going downtown? And that's where the noise variance came in, or the evening variance came in to play. And what we plan on doing is basically all your asphalt work, all your deck work, um, um, in the road section and between the curbs that are already done is happening at night. So all the pedestrians are getting off of the, getting off of the cruise ships. They're able to walk up and down the sidewalks because those are done. And you will not have during the day, traffic from construction trucks and whatnot going up and down the streets with all the tour buses and everything else that is going on, um, if we do this at night. And that's why we've asked for the, uh, Sunday night through Thursday night, eight P.M. to seven A.M. And I, I understand that your, you, your variance would be technically at, starting at ten P.M. And then Friday night, uh, ten P.M. to seven A.M. as well. And with, uh, Saturday night, uh, no work allowed. And so we would be requiring that of the contractor on those timeframes. That would, is when they would be allowed to do the work. Uh, we feel that would be the least disruption. And we would also be breaking up the paving sections. So each pave, getting the base ready to go, um, we would first do front street, same time we were doing front street, we'd do the Ketchikan Creek Bridge. Uh, once those were done, we'd then move on to the Stedman section. Um, once Stedman section was done, we'd move back to Mill Street. And then finally, once those are all ready and up to grade for the final lift of paving, the entire project would be paved and then striped. So that's, that's our plan, phasing one. And that kind of breaks it down of how it would go. Um, and that's basically what I just described. And again, that gets us through, um, basically almost a full year to do all that work. And, uh, as you heard me say, if we don't have right-of-way and we're not able to start in October, the phasing plan that we will require the contractor do is what I call phasing alternative two. And this, uh, simulates basically a start time in the end of November, beginning of December. And under that scenario, uh, we would basically follow the same phasing plan, except we wouldn't be ripping up any sidewalk past Stedman towards Deermont for the first year. We would just complete the sidewalk from the tunnel, um, during the winter, all the way out to, uh, the Ketchikan Creek Bridge. And then we would do all of the, uh, work in between those new curbs and gutters, um, during the, uh, summer season, um, starting in May. And that would again, uh, we're proposing night work to do that. Um, and, uh, um, after we got to the Ketchikan Creek Bridge with all that paving complete, we would shut down. And, uh, start up again, uh, the next spring and be able to do all the concrete work, um, on the section past Ketchikan Creek. And, uh, once the temperatures were warm enough, uh, we would then be able to complete the paving on that section from Ketchikan Creek to Deermont. So that is where we are. Um, and, uh, just, uh, heads off.
Go back to the alternative one for again?
Yes.
What's the lowest temperature that you can pour asphalt in?
Oh, you're gonna, that's, that's a good question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I bet you Garrett does.
You can go pretty cold, but when you start dealing with the rainy season, which is the fall and winter season, it really impacts paving. So having it in the summer months when it's less wet is ideal. Um, but as with concrete, um, to pour concrete in cold weather, you have to protect it and make sure it stays from fifty to ninety degrees when it's curing. So, I mean, we're talking tents, we're talking enclosed structures that you can keep heated. Um, so there's challenges to doing concrete sidewalk work in the winter, but it's doable. Uh, we worked all winter out north on two projects with success. Uh, we feel like we can get this concrete sidewalk work done in the winter. And paving is really, um, ideal for the, for the non, non-rainy season.
If, if, the further you get in the colder temperatures, you risk premature failure of your pavements. And, and that is something that, uh, becomes very expensive from an MNO standpoint later on.
Now, your sidewalk work, that's gonna be during the day.
Correct. So all the winter work, um, basically October one to, uh, May one would all be during the day.
Yeah, on the chart, where does it start? The, um, the twenty-eighth, is that when it starts the paving?
So five A, phase five A would be the start.
Through A? I mean, through eight?
Yeah, through A is, is, is prepping and paving. Um, so, uh, for instance, removing out here on front, right in front of you, uh, we'd be removing the asphalt, uh, doing repairs on the surface of the, of, uh, the viaducts. Um, so there would be, there'd be work there. Um, and then getting in ready to raise all the iron, uh, protect all the iron before we did the final lift of paving there. On Mill Street, it'd be a little different. We'd be digging down, prepping your base up and then coming in with, uh, four layers or three layers of asphalt and waiting for the final layer, um, there. The benefit of this project, and, and I'll mention because we say, well, why so many layers of asphalt? Why are you doing such a thick base? In the future, we wanted to set this project up, uh, with what we call, uh, perpetual pavement, uh, which means, uh, we come through the next time, we grind two inches off, we pave two inches back, we're done, we're gone. Um, and we've reset the, we've reset the pavement back to basically the first day we were there. So this is gonna take more time, but in the end, the next time we come around, it's gonna be much smoother and much faster.
And your finish date then is August tenth?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dick?
Yeah, Chris, uh, you mentioned earlier about the right-of-ways to do work with, uh, or you get, you may get delayed. What date do you have to have those right-of-ways in place or, or it's gonna affect us for two years and not one? It'll be two summers if we don't get those right-of-ways, do you?
We're getting pretty close. Um, we're talking about, um, we think if we can get everything done by the beginning, the very beginning of July, get through the certification and bid, we can hit this.
Okay.
So we're, that's why I wanted to very much let people know that there's a very good chance we could end up on altern- alternative two.
Julie, oh, Julie had something.
Yeah, I, I don't think summer is a dry season for Ketchikan, just that I.
Dry.
I don't think we have had a dry season, but I was just wondering if you're saying from the end of April through the second week of August, you're going to have the noise during the night, that entire time? Is that what you're saying?
In, in, in certain locations, yes. Uh, it's not gonna be throughout the entire thing. So like, uh, we were saying, um, the Ketchikan Creek Bridge, that's a, that's polyester deck. We'd remove two inches of asphalt. Removing the asphalt would be really quick. There would be some noise with that. Um, then there would be repair of the actual concrete deck below that asphalt. There's some chipping that would be involved in something like that. That would take a little bit of time. Um, and then put pouring the, pouring the polyester concrete. That's more of a curing activity, um, where you pour it, there's not a lot of noise and then you wait. So in that instance, there's not a ton of noise. Um, there will be a lot of noise, uh, out here initially on front street, we're removing pavement. But then it's a matter of prepping, putting down, uh, uh, putting down membranes, uh, prepping the iron. So there is noise, but it's not nearly as much as say when we remove the asphalt and the initial go. And so it, it'll vary. So you'll have this section, it'll have some noise on it, but you won't have other sections. And then it'll shift throughout the project. But yeah, it will span, it'll span, uh, that timeframe that we have up there essentially.
Was the option considered to do that during the day, do the noisy times during the day? So there's residential areas in that area too, and, and lots of places of lodging.
Yes, and we understand that. And we knew that there was the downside of, of making noise and, and lodging and everything. We just felt that with the amount of traffic and all the pedestrians that are in coming off the cruise ships, um, it was going, it, it is gonna be extremely difficult during the day to get that done and not have major disruptions during the day with all the other tour trip, tour operators that are going through, their buses. Operations that becomes very, very difficult. Um, and also puts, uh, you know, a struggle on them as well. So it's really a, a decision point, um, that we're looking for you guys to help us make those decisions.
Julie?
How much time, if we did it during the day, doesn't that add time to the project too, wouldn't it? Because you're not able to do it if you're not working at night. Are you working during the day and at night for this project?
No. So what we would do in the case of, the winter work would be during the day. The, the summer work are the May first to, uh, whenever the work was finished, uh, that's what we're talking about. We wouldn't start before eight P.M.
Oh, okay.
And we would go until seven A.M. And that's Sunday through Thursdays, what we're proposing. And that would be the requirement we're gonna put in the contract. And then Friday night, it would be ten P.M. to seven A.M. And what we did is we looked at the cruise ship schedules, um, to get a feeling for when are they leaving? Um, when are they, um, the majority of that public gone? Um, and, and then coming in and starting the work.
Yeah, I like, say, I appreciate trying to mitigate the issue, but I haven't seen a road construction project go yet that can't feel something without making noise. And we tried to mitigate that best. I remember when, um, the Thomas Avenue water, wastewater phase, uh, from the post office went, we tried to do that work during the day and it took forever. We went through that for a long time. So I think the best way to, to narrow that gap is to do it at times when there's less traffic and that maybe at night. It is gonna cause some disruption. If you get an opportunity and the weather, uh, works, can we do a lot of that grinding in, in say March? Prior to the paving, uh, I don't know if there'll be a grinder in town at that time, or is there a time period where you grind before that you have, you know, you can work with that or, or I know that's a large part of the noise is that, the grinding operation, so. I don't know.
I think there's opportunities for that. Um, it's hard to direct a contractor to, to work in, on that kind of time restriction. As Chris stated, we did look at the cruise ship schedule and, you know, make, making mention of, okay, we have from, from eight P.M. to ten P.M. Maybe that's something we can work with. Uh, there's, there's two hours there. I don't think they're gonna tackle the whole, uh, tunnel to Deermont in one, you know, one shift, one phase. So it'll be broken up from Grant to Dock and then Dock to Mission, you know, just stepping along.
But what I was asking is if we were able to grind from the tunnel to, um, basically the, um, Stedman Street Bridge, uh, it, it's a weather allot, you know, uh, because grinding can be done in wet weather. The, the laying back of the pavement, that, that takes some time. And I didn't know if that might speed up the project or allow for more paving at that nighttime and less raining and, I don't know.
It's po- it's definitely a possibility. Uh, we do have to be careful about how much area we open at once, um, because we deal with a lot of water, storm drain, storm, storm runoff, um, things like that. So we don't wanna make a canal out here of, of rainwater, but, I'll definitely put it in my, in the back pocket and when, when it's advertised and awarded, um, I can work with the contractor to minimize the impacts of noise at night if it's, if that's what we do.
Dick?
Yeah, uh, just another comment. A lot of the ships are probably gone on a typical day by six. And I think Steve or somebody can tell that better. So you might get two hours there earlier. And I'm not saying don't do it all right. I'm saying they'll get it done quicker. If you get those two hours on those days when ships are gone two hours earlier.
Yeah, and, and I will say that, you know, that was a kind of a judgment call to eight, eight P.M. Um, and, and looking at this cruise ship schedules and it was, yeah, that's primarily what I saw too, was there's six, seven o'clock, the majority of the time, but there are, there are some that come in before that and, and stick around. So I think that's something we could, we wouldn't be opposed to, to doing if you guys are in favor of.
That is a good idea.
Well, and just in general by, by six or, even the ships that are still here after that, they're not doing excursions that late.
Yeah, right.
You know, they've pretty much gone back to the boat for dinner and you don't, we don't see them downtown, so.
The buses may be coming back up to five thirty though. So you got.
But usually after about six though, they're gonna.
Uh, six though, you should be able to start working on most days. There's gonna be a few, you gotta ship in like, if Disney steals what they do, they're in to late o'clock. On Saturday, but I don't think they're gonna do it on Saturdays. So that's, there may be a couple others.
Yeah, that's, that's what we saw too. And, and one of the reasons I suggested Saturdays, we just, we, we wouldn't allow the contractor to work. The other dates that I saw consistently were any holidays, um, which we also, um, we could restrict.
Well, the, most of them get on the ship, have to get on the ship by a certain time before it even leaves. So it's two hours before.
No, one half hour.
A half hour?
One half hour.
But most of them are so afraid of missing that boat, they're.
But I definitely look at the calendar there and say, be stringent on that eight o'clock. I mean, I'll work with them, the last boat's gone out of here. I mean, if they, if a boat's leaving at six or seven, they can be grinding by six or seven. Nobody's on the street anyway.
Yeah.
And that would be extra time. All right, anybody else with a question for? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Hit the light there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, we do have a motion on the floor. Does anybody wanna talk to it? Yes, Julie.
I, I would just like to offer an amendment that we put it off until our next council meeting.
Do we have an amendment? Do we have a second?
It's not the timely thing and we have a request in here to do that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second.
What would be the reason to put it up?
So that the owners of, we have a request from, uh, another business that they'd like to be here and they weren't informed about it.
Is there a timeliness issue? We, we don't make a decision. Is there a timeliness issue? We, we don't make a decision. This could turn into phase two, alternatives two, if it goes over two years.
Well, as I asked out, that they don't start till October. So what does that mean?
We're talking about this, this next summer. So I think we can hold, I mean, we can wait till next meeting like Kay and.
I don't see a reason for waiting. I mean, we've got Kay's and Rich's comment here and they're going to say the same thing. And we're going to make a decision.
Well, let's vote on the amendment and see if we're going anywhere. We're voting on amendment to defer this until the next meeting. Call the roll, please. Dick or Tom?
Goose?
No. No pressure.
Technology is our friend.
You should hear over here under her breath as she talks to this meeting.
That's the best part of the, of the late night program.
Isom?
Yes.
Seaberson?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Flora?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Goose?
No.
Okay, that passes four to three. It'll be on our next meeting.
No, it did not. It failed, didn't it?
No.
No, it passed?
It passed.
What passed?
Four to three.
Passed four to three. All right, that takes, we'll be on the next meeting. That drops us down to.
Carl? If I may.
Yeah.
Carl, in regards to the variance, is that something that's just taken through staff, right? Does it come back to council?
You're talking about the right of ways?
The right of way stuff, yeah.
It will have to come back to council? Okay. All right, move on. That brings us down to 784, change order one final to contract 1701, berth one two, we could fill the rehabilitation phase for A Pool Engineering. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approved change order number one final to contract number 17-01, phase for A of berth one and two rehabilitation project with Pool Engineering Inc. in the amount of $230,433. Authorizing funding from the amount of $58,000 from the approved project contingency and authorize the budget transfer in the amount of $172,433 from the berth one and two rehabilitation capital account. Raying the total contract cost of $810,383 and direct to city manager execute the change order on behalf of the city council.
Chris in second. And Bob, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, I'd like to talk about, you know, the, the process and the fact that our engineering firm and staff, we missed the fact that we needed administrators and certified plumbers on the project. The, the process from the city council standpoint needs to be fair and direct and straightforward so that everybody's bidding apples and apples and there's not a misunderstanding in regards to what's going on here. I know there's been some accusations in regards to this, but it, it doesn't sound like there was very clear and concise direction until such time as we got the memo from the state of Alaska. And I don't see Steve here. Steve. Well, there he is. You're hiding, you're hiding from me. You want to speak to it, Steve, and tell me exactly what happened here and how we got to this point?
Port Harbors Director Steve Polk. Most of the facts have been presented by the, the two contractors that already spoke. To summarize a couple of them, this project, the waterline part of this was just water main replacement when this first started. And it was our opinion, and I checked with the engineer, that the five foot rule applied and that there were no, no buildings within five feet of these water mains basically were being replaced, were replacing any fixtures, anything like that. So when the, when the question came in before bids were due, we, he did issue an addendum saying that it wasn't required, the mechanical administrator license. Although he did put in there as Mr. Paulson pointed out, that they would have to meet all state and local requirements and that. But because our bid documents, the addendum said that mechanical administrator was not required, that's what kind of triggered it for me as, as throwing it in a different direction than previous issues similar to this. If our addendum had just said you must meet all state and local requirements, that kind of puts it on them to, to do the research. But because we said in our addendum that it wasn't required, when it turned out that one was required, that's where I saw that we should compensate them for having to go that extra mile to do that. Before we did that though, I double checked the bid documents. Who was the low bidder on this project? The second low bidder was Western Dockham Bridge, Mr. Paulson's company. But they were $277,700 higher. This hundred dollar difference, hundred and four thousand dollar difference for this part of the change order requirement meant that it was still the low bidder by 160, 170,000 dollars. So I, in good conscience, conscience could say, I think we're still fair because it wouldn't have affected the bidding. I went back to the bid tabulations to see how these individual contractors bid this part of the project. Because they, their bid tabulation had to break it down by the specific task. The bid tabulations, Western Dockham Bridge for the waterline replacement was 365,000. Pool was 239,50. So if you add 104 into that, that would make him 334. So that's still $20,000 less just on this bid sub item. So although I can see both sides of it, it still comes back to me that we issued an addendum that said one wasn't required. And it took a while to get an answer out of the state well after the project was underway. And that's the, the two and a half page letter we got. And it finally, for me, cemented it that we understand it now. Because they're saying, well, a dock is, is, it should be treated like a building. It's a structure, it should be treated like a building. But that's not all the way it had been explained to me over the years. And I don't know what else.
Sounds good.
To say.
Anybody have any questions?
Now, we did, we did end up having to have a mechanical administrator anyway. Because once we got all the new lines hooked up and pressurized to the highest pressure they've probably been in a while, our 10-year-old backflow preventers all failed. So that, replacing that stuff, we knew would require mechanical administrators, but by then schmuck was already on board. So as it turns out, we probably would, would have had to require one anyway, even if the state had said that the water lines, they took our opinion that, oh, they're just water mains. You don't have to worry about that part. Because if you're putting stuff in the street, you don't have to have a licensed plumber. We just saw these as water mains, just like in the street, except these water mains were under the dock. They weren't the fixtures.
Yeah, that's one of the questions I had. I know that when we're putting water mains in the street, you don't need a licensed plumber to put those in. Guy can just, you know, dig the ditch and put the pipe in and make sure that it meets the standards. But going forward, I guess, is more of a concern for me and how we try to mitigate this problem. Because it sounds like there was issues on other projects in ports and harbors. You know, prior, you know, bar harbor and different things, there was some accusations that that had some issues. I just want to make sure that, you know, if somebody feels they're slighted because we made a wrong decision, I apologize, but the fact is that we, we need to make sure that our specs are, you know, following the rules as far as state concerned.
Absolutely, I agree. And I'm glad that we finally got this ruling from the state. It, it spells it out, because that I've seen it. And it's something that I'm going to share at the Harbor Master Conference in the fall. You know, because we talk about even little issues like this that affect us. And so, you know, our fellow, you know, harbor masters and that around the state can understand things as well. So we'll, we'll go through that. It was disheartening for me because I, I like working with all these local contractors, you know, that they're good companies, all of them are. You know, Western Dockham Bridge just put Thomas Basin back together for us in three days. And I just got the, the bill from them the other day. It was just over 50 grand, you know, and which was less than I had initially estimated based on the damage we saw. They did a great job, did it quick. So I like working with those guys. Pool has done a great job on, on a number of our projects. Western Dockham Bridge did two projects for us last week. So to, to see these guys, you know, butt in heads a little bit, it's like, you know, it's disheartening for me. And I, I, I felt bad that we put them in this position. We didn't mean to.
Yeah, and, and I agree with that. But I, I think the failure was on our part to make sure that we didn't understand that correctly and fully when we put the bid out. So I just want to make sure we move forward and understanding.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Thanks, Steve.
Yes, sir.
All right, call the roll.
Goose?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Seaberson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven nothing, brings us down to 786, resolution 172667, authorizing an application for Department of Homeland Security Port Security Grant Program, funding for equipment and training in support of marine response and firefighting. I think that's for a new vote. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, move the city council per resolution number 17-2667, authorizing the application for Department of Homeland Security Port Security Grant Program, funding for equipment and training in support of marine response and firefighting. Can you establish an effective?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second, Dave. Anybody else on, Bob?
Yeah, your honor, this is, this is for a grant of a million dollars and with a city portion, 25% of 250,000 potentially. And it's a homeland security grant. So it's not just a fireboat. We have to expand into such things as, you know, hazmat response, search and rescue, whatever it may be. And Chief Hope, I'll invite him up to speak to what, what their plans are.
Where is he?
But I, but I don't, I'm not sure that, I mean, I, I know that we haven't used the boat much and, and that's a good thing. Same way with our fire trucks, if we don't have to use them, I think we're being successful in our education of the public and preventing fires. But I'm not so sure what the size of fireboat we need in Ketchikan is. The city of Juneau doesn't have one, you know, Petersburg has one. I talked to Seward today. They have what's called a metal craft. It's a 30-foot, has two outboards, has a center volvo pump system. And they run a, a monitor of about 1,500 gallons per minute. And that would make, you know, for most of the stuff that we're going to do, if we have to get into the dock facility to fight a boat fire or respond to an airplane fire, out of float or something under a dock or something, it makes perfect sense to have a fast boat like that. And that's about $280,000, not a million. And it sits on a trailer. You can pull it out, maintain it. If the outboard goes bad, you take the outboard shop and put another one on, that kind of a thing. So I, I, I guess my, my concern is, is if we are doing the right thing by, by expanding the cost of our fireboat. In our budget this year on capital projects, it was scheduled for replacement in 2021 for a million and a half. I read a, a lot of stuff about fireboats and most larger ports are, are getting away from multiple large fireboats because of the simple fact that they don't have enough call volume to justify the expense of the number that they had and, and, you know, the need to replace them with very little hours on them. And so where I respect the fire department and their ability to do stuff, we are a fire department first. And, and that's where main focus should be. And when you start adding multiple functions to a boat, the cost certainly is going to go up. And the other fact is those that have ever owned a boat understand the bigger the boat, the more the expense. And then after you purchase it, you have to operate it and maintain it. So those are some concerns with the financial situation the city of Ketchikan is. This is tax money and we've got a lot of other uses for those things. I'm not advocating that we don't need a fireboat. I just don't know if we need a large one. I also had a conversation with the airport manager in regards to the mutual aid agreement and the fact that we have an airport ferry system here. We're going to have redundant ramps pretty soon. And in Montreal, they went to a barge system rather than have fireboats. They run their fire trucks aboard a barge and fight fires from the waterside off a barge. We have that safe opportunity to do it off an airport ferry. And so if we had a larger fire not capable of being handled by the smaller boat, that is an option. There's a talk about response time and, and that kind of stuff. But I think that's all things that can be worked out through a mutual aid agreement. So not knowing exactly what kind of boat they're looking at, I understand the grants available and we can go after it. And I know that we probably don't have to spend up to the full amount of the grant. I think we need to have a conversation about the right sized boat for Ketchikan.
Boy, I thought it was just our, we went fishing for a million bucks and we haven't decided what we're looking for. Or do we have some pinned up in the fire department?
We don't have a final selection or determination made, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilmember Seaberson's comments have a degree of merit. But I think those are discussions that can be had after the application is filed. You know, perhaps a, a working committee, but councilmember Seaberson participating would be the best way to go.
Anybody else?
Mark? What did we spend to rebuild the engines in 2015 and 16? Now we're talking about good engines on the boat that we might want to throw away. That's one question. And my other question is, since it's been repowered recently, could the grant be used to replace the pumps that are no longer serviceable and repairable?
Question. Adner Hoag, Fire Chief. Very good question. And we did consider that the, we spent, I believe the final total was around $80,000 with the, with the repowering, 80 to 90,000 dollars. Because we ended up having to rebuild essentially both engines completely due to some, some standing water and the engine seizing up. So we've talked to the engine manufacturers, we've talked to companies that sell fire pumps. We attempted to, to get replacement parts for our existing pumps and those are no longer in production and replacement parts aren't available. So our only option really is to, to replace the pumps. So as we started to look into that and spoke with the engine manufacturer, they don't rate those engines to have pumps attached to them the way that they're currently attached on the front side of the engine. They don't have enough torque, they're not rated for that kind of operation. So none of the pump manufacturers will sell us new pumps to go on the front of the engine. So that would leave us with an option. If we wanted to, to put new pumps in there, we would have to add a new engine in there. There's room in, in the space below the deck to add another engine, but you can't access it without cutting the top of the boat off, dropping the new engine in, putting the pumps in. And at that point, you're spending as much or more than you're going to spend to, to essentially buy a whole new boat, especially if we're successful in, in obtaining this grant. If we're not, not successful, then maybe we should look at something like that. But if we're going to spend that much money anyhow, we'll probably better off to, to get a new, a new boat. And the boat that we have does have a good sound hole. We, we checked that before we put the money into it. And we've got two good engines in it. Someone could have a use for it other than a fireboat. And I think we still have potential to, to sell that or surplus that at the end of this. And we could probably recoup a good portion of that money, if not all of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dick?
Just to comment, if, if I'm to support this resolution, it's going to be only on the condition that it comes, we see a design and comes back, because I'm, I'm with Bob. I don't, haven't seen the use of that boat except for spraying water in front of the cruise ships coming in most of the time.
Yeah, we'd have.
And do we have something else? And so the size boat we got in right now is to me excessive.
And if I may, we have done some preliminary work, just trying to get a, a rough price to make sure we're in the right range, right? And the vessel that we're.
And the vessel that we're preliminarily looking at is about ten feet shorter than what we currently have. So we are looking at smaller than what we currently have. And the expansion of capabilities that Councilmember Severson talked about, this grant requires you, as most homeland security grants to do, they're tied to terrorism and security primarily. So you do have to do a few things a little different than I might normally do as a fire department. I have to look for other ways that I can, that I can help out other functions within our community, such as the police department and security and the airport and things like that. And we can do that fairly easily and have more capability and spend no more than what we'd spend to buy a smaller boat and pay full price ourselves. A thirty-foot outboard that Councilmember Severson suggested, that vessel wouldn't qualify for this grant, so we couldn't use that grant money for that smaller boat. And so we're still, then we're out two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars out of our budget versus two-fifty to get the, the other vessel with more capabilities.
Hello, Bob and Dave.
Actually, she was, she was.
Bob?
You know, again, I think that the cost of ownership after you buy it is another thing. If you go to a larger vessel, at some point, depending on its use, you have to have Coast Guard certification. And then the training that's required and the ongoing training because you're doing multiple tasks, hazardous materials, waterfront rescue, different things like that. We're a fire department and we start expanding those things. We got a budget right now that we're concerned about and public safety is paid through tax money. So we have more in our share of places to spread that money around, so we got to be conscious of that when we think about buying bigger and more active apparatus.
Jan Lee?
So what I read was there's rescue involvement in this. So what are some of the new, I know that there's some homeland security requirements for all of our communities for emergency response. Would this fall into some of that? Is that how that grant works or?
I'm not sure that I understand the question.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm, so I know we sit on the LAPC and there's requirements for the community as a whole, including the outside islands and stuff, as to what we're going to do if there's an actual disaster or terrorism or any of those things that happen. Or you have a plane crash or the airport, you know, does this boat, from what I was reading, it, it can be used as a rescue?
It could be used as rescue, correct.
So does that, I mean, and I know the grant is based on the homeland security, so is it sort of contingent also on what, what we would need if there was, say, your, all the bridges were taken out over here and over here and then you have a platter taken from Satsuma?
I think the answer to your question is that preparing for that, there is no mandate that requires us to prepare for that, if that's your question. I can tell you that from what we're currently doing, the operations we're currently doing to what we would have to do different in order to qualify for this grant, the main thing that would be additional on this vessel would be a sea burn capability, which just means that the cabin is going to be sealed so that it can provide breathing air to the crew during operation, so that if they're in a chemical environment, they're protected from that. That has a dual role for us as well. We have lots of hazardous chemicals that come through, we have ammonia in our processing plants. If we're working on one of those scenes, you could actually be working right in the gas cloud and that vessel would be capable of supplying the crew with fresh air, breathable air while they're working that, that situation as well. Or many of the other barges that come in with hazardous chemicals on it, so.
And I guess that's my, was my point, was we haven't had a big major fire since NEFCO or, I mean, we haven't had the firebug of the nineteen forty. But if we did, that boat was used during both of those.
Right. We have lots of potential here for, for use of a fireboat. Fortunately, we haven't had to, but it's kind of like we had the discussion about the ladder truck when we were talking about that. We prepare for the worst and we hope for the best, but we can't just not prepare in all cases. Is there a mandate for us to have this serviced? No. But we have it now and, and I think the community expects it from us. So that's kind of where we are.
All right, anybody else? Greg, Dave?
Yeah, to sort of follow up with Jan Lee's point there. I'm always interested in the global disasters. I think I've actually been, I've been writing a lot lately, I've been working on stories about, now with the NEFCO fire, with Standard Oil fire. And yeah, we're kind of in the situation now, we built these big wonderful steel docks and it seems like everything's protected. Well, NEFCO is still not. We had a fire out at the old place, you know, just a few days, just recently. I think we're, I think there's a danger of getting complacent and saying, we don't need this stuff, as Councilmember, oh, we use the fire for is to spray. Well, if we could very well need one, if we don't have it, we're all going to regret it. And so we need to be very careful that we don't rush to downsize to the point that we haven't got response. And I agree with what you're saying about we need to make sure that we'll get, and yes, as soon as this will come back to us before the final decision on whatever boat. But yeah, I, I would caution us not to go, we don't need to feed a fireboat, or we're okay without one, or, or we can barge a couple of fire trucks over the, I've seen how that works. It can work, it doesn't work well. So that's just my thought.
Kelly?
Yeah, and I want to pigeon off with Kifer is that happened when I had my accident. Just a month before, May thirty-first, ninety-five, a man had a house fall on his legs. The fire department asked that we get the bags that you would put under a, that could lift a, a train. Oh, we'll never have, that happened again. Then I happened a month later and we had to use house jets. So I guess I'm a little leery in just assuming that nothing bad can happen, because it does.
And, and we can't prepare for everything.
No, you can't.
We can't. We would, we would go broke trying to. And so Councilmember Severson has a great point, and I do think we need to take a close look at what do we need to have and make sure that we're rightsizing whatever, whatever we end up getting.
All right. Think we hit it all?
You get a grant?
Thank you, sir. All right, call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Goose?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Goose?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven, nothing brings us down to managers report.
Carl?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody have any questions on any of the items?
Bob? Yeah, I'd just like to thank the finance department for checking in on, yeah, in regards to sales tax and the reporting thing. And I'm glad they, they are confident that they don't have a problem. I'm not sure.
The last line was kind of snarky. They say a great solution to a problem doesn't exist.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they say.
It made me laugh, but.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to city clerks file?
None, Your Honor.
City attorneys file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items? Mayor and council comments, Dick?
Nope, nothing.
Judy?
Nothing.
Jan Lee?
Julie? Just a comment that was talked about earlier before the meeting started about the joint, the cooperative relations committee, that it's kind of, it's just on hold right now. It's to the call of the chair and the chairs, Steve Bradford and myself, won't call a meeting unless it's needed. So if you can think of anything we need to meet for, let me know, but until then, you won't see it on the calendar.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes, Your Honor, I happen to go to a DOT meeting in regards to the, the plan to work on the airport ferry ramps and add other facilities and parking. And during that conversation, Councilman Goose and I were able to talk to the DOT, I think it was Mr. Miller, who was the head engineer for that group, and talk to him about the future of Tungus Avenue. And there was an indication that it wasn't the money that was issued with some of the design criteria. So I later had a conversation with our Senator's Office, who has met with DOT, and it sounds like they're going to start very soon with a phased project. Part of it's biodect, part of it is a grind and pave situation, and they're going to start aggressive, it sounds like.
Oh, good.
Did he indicate, Bob, that we might see that in, in this year eighteen too?
So we could really get more things going on. Can he actually thank us for our letter?
Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mark?
I will be out of town and unable to attend the next meeting.
No problem, I'll vote for you.
You're so good, John.
I've worked so hard not to.
You shouldn't call him John.
Okay, that brings us to the mayor, I have nothing at this time, brings us down to other new business. We have not an executive session, we have one, request for executive session, discuss potential litigation associated with contract thirteen thirty-eight, Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project, Leighton Dodson Joint Venture Construction. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to consider that the best interest of the city going to executive session according to Ketchikan Municipal Code two-point-oh-four-point-oh-two-five-A-one and three and AS four-four-point-six-two-point-three-one-zero-C-one and three, to discuss the Leighton Dodson Joint Venture contract's potential failure to fulfill the contractual obligations under contract number thirteen dash thirty-eight-A and in particular, but not limited to the change order number eleven, which includes the need to discuss the subject knowledge of which would have an adverse impact upon the finances of the city and to discuss potential litigation strategy with legal counsel within the attorney-client privileges.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moving in second, call the roll, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Sure.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
This one's a venture.
Severson?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
And Goose?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven, nothing, let's go. Oh, yeah, anybody want? Executive session with management, our legal, considering representative, at this time, we have no clear action. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
You're adjourned, thank you, everybody.